Uh, roll call please.
Roger Sprague.
Yes.
Susan Walkie here. Kip Ward.
Here.
Don Williams.
Here.
Jim Davis.
Here.
Chester Norikas.
Here.
And Wes Ryan.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is comments from citizens present. Do we have any citizens present in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item. We have minutes of two different meetings that need to be approved. Since we have a different council now than we had at the time that those meetings were held, I think we need to ask who has not reviewed those minutes? And if that's the case, that you should abstain from voting on approval of the minutes.
If you have not reviewed the tape of the meeting or were not present at the meeting, some of you weren't present, do not vote and abstain.
Are there any abstentions?
I abstain.
I abstain.
You were here, so you're okay then. So we have five out of seven, we have a quorum, so we're okay to go ahead. All right, we have the minutes of December 8th, 2014. We also have the minutes of December 22nd, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the minutes of December 8th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discretion? No additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried.
Chair, I would move that we approve the minutes of the meeting of December 22nd.
Second.
There, uh, I thought I included both those minutes together.
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the 22nd. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's carried. The next item on the agenda is election of officers of the agency. We need a chair and a vice chair. The nominations are open for a chair, and there's no second required for the nominations.
I nominate Roger Sprague.
Second.
Don't really need a second, Chester. But if you want a second, that's fine. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll close the nominations, and I'm stuck with it again for another year, it looks like. We need a, we need a vice chair.
You'll need to vote.
Open the nomination.
Vote, sir.
You'll need to...
Oh, that's right, we need to close the nominations. I'm sorry. Need a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now we need to...
I guess now we're done.
Well, now you have nominations that are closed. You need to vote on them.
Well, that's why we got to vote on it. No, gee whiz. I guess I don't want to do that after all. I will, uh, all in favor of the motion, vote yes or no. All in favor say aye.
We need a roll call.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Opposed? It's carried. Okay, now we're, we're legal.
Actually, I need, I need someone to make the motion and have someone second it.
I thought we had the...
We had a motion to close the nominations. The nominations were closed. We voted on it, and now you had one person nominated, so a motion to appoint...
Nominate.
Sorry, I thought we had done that.
Motion to nominate.
Is there a motion to accept the nomination?
There is. Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the nomination of Roger Sprague for chair of the agency.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Now we're good.
Now we're done. Okay. I'll open the nominations for vice chair.
Oh, golly. I would nominate Susan Walkie, Mr. Chair.
Is there, are there any other nominations? Then I think we need a vote to close the nominations. There are motions...
I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Okay, we need a motion to accept the nomination.
Mr. Chair, I move we appoint Susan Walkie as vice chair of the agency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's carried. Congratulations. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, we have no public hearings comment. Let's see here. We have some special order of business, however. Do you want to bring that up there?
Good evening. Allison Robertson and I will be sharing tonight's presentation. And first up is the, the updates that we've made to our project document, which you have at your chairs there. Allison?
Uh, this document was first created for the 20 years of urban renewal, and that was, also the last update was August of 2013. So it's not quite been a year and a half, and now we're doing our updates for the 25 years of urban renewal. And if you look at the next slide, this pie graph shows the estimated allocation of expenditures for all of our projects. And you can see that infrastructure is about 58 percent. Visitors, facilities, and parks, 20 percent. Development, 15 percent. Or property rehabilitation, which is our facade improvement loan and other loan programs, about 7 percent. And so I'll briefly run through the projects that we added in this update. The D-Lake South First Street Traffic Signal Project replaced a Highway 101 traffic signal that was on wires, putting it on more substantial mast arms, and upgraded the sidewalk ramps to ADA standards. Also included were audible pedestrian crossing signals and signal housing reflectors. And that is to help with better nighttime visibility during powder out, power outages or inclement weather. The Nelscott Southwest 35th Street Parking Lot was constructed on urban renewal property on the south end of the Nelscott Business Strip. And this was to help relieve parking impacts from the ODOT Highway 101 project, which is now under construction. The D-Lake Southeast 16th to 19th Street Sidewalk filled one of our sidewalk gaps and added a bus shelter with a designated turnout space on the shoulder of the highway. Urban renewal funded this project, which was carried out by Public Works. We also added our Business Expansion Loan Program, which is the fourth tool in the Urban Renewal Economic Development Toolbox. And this is for businesses in the urban renewal district or businesses locating into the urban renewal district to apply to borrow up to $75,000 of loans with a fixed interest rate of 0 to 2 percent. We also have the Cutler Southwest Keel Sewer Extension Project, which extended an existing city sanitary sewer line along an undeveloped right-of-way, which is southwest keel. And it ended at the end, I'm sorry, on the east side of Highway 101. This will help for future development in the area, and a couple of businesses that were not on sewer are now hooked into that sewer line. The West Devils Lake Road Pump Station upgrade was funded by urban renewal and carried out by Public Works. And this improved station will provide for future development opportunities within that sewer basin. And there were also some improvements that were made to the D-Lake School. As you know, this is owned by urban renewal and leased by the Four Cs as the Lincoln City Cultural Center. Urban renewal constructed some parking lot improvements in the area immediately surrounding the new Level 3 charging station as part of the Oregon Electric Vehicle Highway Project. And this was initiated by ODOT. Urban renewal also provided $8,800 in gap funds. And this was, the cultural center actually received two grants in the amount of $65,000 for their roof and gutter replacement project, and then they needed $8,800 more. So that was a real good example of how to leverage our money. And that summarizes the projects for the 25 years of urban renewal report. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, please.
Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry. Is it Chair? Is it Chair in this meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Get my titles right. First meeting. How many loans have been issued under the Business Expansion Loan Program?
We haven't actually issued any. We've had one applicant, but she decided at the last minute that her timeline was too short, and she went ahead and just did it on her own without any financing.
Any thoughts as to why this is not being taken advantage of?
I think that, you know, it's a new program, and it takes a little while for word of mouth to get out in the community. We have done a couple of mailers.
How new?
What's that?
How new?
How to?
No, how new. You said it's a new program.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. It's, it's maybe a year or a year and a half. Mm-hmm. And we also have the Energy Efficiency Loan Program, which is also another new tool that came out right before this one.
And this is separate from the facade improvement?
Yes.
Program?
So with...
And that is still in effect?
Yes. With the facade loans, we've had over 40 issued, and that's been over 10 years.
Okay.
With energy efficiency, we've had one, and then business expansion, we haven't had any yet.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
You know, explain a little bit of the business expansion. What all does it cover? Is facade included in that or not?
No, it's, it's for businesses rather than property owners. So, you know, we were trying to really get some funds out to businesses even though they may not own the building. And so this is more for equipment or, uh, some way to improve either efficiency or production or if they were going to expand, like, let's say a coffee shop was going to add food and they needed to do some expansion. It could be indoor essential furnishings. So different things like that. Also relocation expenses, just to try and get people to locate within the district.
Okay.
And it, we, we strictly specify it's not to pay off existing debt or anything like that, so.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on to number five, the Business Gap Analysis.
Okay. Uh, the Business Gap Analysis was brought about because over the course of many years, we've had several meetings, and the subject of business recruitment and/or business expansion has been discussed. And usually, the lack of current data prevents decisions from being made. Subjective information is shared amongst the group with varying degrees of supportive facts. We have some nice discussions. However, the need for reliable analysis of business in Lincoln City would be helpful to move discussions and strategic planning forward. In conjunction with our economic development partners, which are the Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Development Center, and the Lincoln County Economic Development Alliance, the agency has prepared a request for qualifications to commission a citywide business gap analysis. The scope of work includes input and participation from a variety of stakeholders and local interested public. The Business Gap Analysis will identify which employment sectors in Lincoln City are lacking or weak. And the resulting document will be used as a tool for the above-mentioned economic development partners and will provide specific information and direction for business expansion opportunities and also perhaps for business recruitment. The request for qualifications was advertised last November. Two responses were received and evaluated by staff. At the agency's direction, staff negotiated a contract to complete the Business Gap Analysis and is now bringing back for your consideration the award of that contract. So there should be a scope of work in your packet from Eco Northwest, which covers the work that they will be doing. And there are also a couple of follow-up options that they are able to provide if we are interested at some point in that. And that would be to do white paper on the impacts of big-box retailers or a focal point attraction, how those two things would impact our local economy. So if you would like to proceed, you could direct staff to enter into a contract with Eco Northwest for the Business Gap Analysis in the amount of $7,500.
Any questions? Discussion?
So the follow-up work options would be extra?
Yes.
Contract, okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm just trying to follow along, so forgive me, new to this here. Under background, you say the lack of current data prevents decisions from being made. Can you amplify on that? What does it mean, the lack of current data, and how back, how far back, or have you even looked? I mean...
Well, this is just more, there isn't actually any study that talks about what businesses we have and what businesses we need for local year-round residents and for visitors. So this is more to figure out if there's some market segment that we're missing or something we could improve upon or expand that would be within the city.
So that, that is not a job of any department within this city that has been tasked to understand that information? From the beginning of the city, we've never even asked that question?
No. Economic development has been a new focus for the agency. In 2009, when we did an amendment to our plan, we added economic development assistance as a tool in the urban renewal plan. And so since then, we have been adding tools to the toolbox. And so this is part of what would help with that effort.
Okay. And then under RF, if I may continue, under RFQ, it was advertised in November. Two responses were received. Out of how many requests?
Um, so we, we...
Is two a small number, a large number?
There aren't a lot of people doing this sort of work, and it's pretty specialized. So we had interest from more than two, but there were two who actually submitted responses to the RFQ and were willing to do the work.
And how do you know how to rate these people or companies?
We have, based on what is required in the RFQ and the qualifications that we're looking for from that consultant, then we have a ranking system that is scored, and we have to advertise what that scoring criteria would be.
But how did you arrive at that criteria? If we've never done this, we didn't know. How do we, I'm just, I want to know. How do we know this?
We spoke with other cities who have done similar work and other professionals in the industry to get a sense of, you know, based on what we need and then what is typical. That's how we arrived at the criteria for scoring. We have done other RFQs before, but not specific to this topic.
Okay. And then underneath, this Business Gap Analysis will address some unknowns to refine approaches. And then how do you know what's unknown?
Well, they'll, they'll let us know. They will be telling us what might be missing or, you know, that's the gap. That's the essence of what we're, the product that we'll be getting from them.
And then finally, I'm sorry, but again, I just want to get up to speed.
Yes, no worries.
This is not grilling of you. I just, I need to answer these questions in my head. Under issues, interest from local organizations and in the community has been demonstrated.
Yeah, this...
Based on what?
Based on our past discussions over the last few years with the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Alliance, and our partners.
Has it been in a formal setting or is this just at lunch?
Um, there have been economic development meetings, yes.
And they've given you specific direction to say, we want to know these things?
Yes.
Okay. I think I'm almost at the bottom here.
Okay.
This, under the Exhibit 1, this was from the company, the, sorry, what was it? The Eco Northwest?
Eco Northwest.
Is that correct?
Uh-huh.
Under Exhibit 1 and all that?
Mm-hmm.
When they say, and I just want to know this company, if we're going to start working with them. Under, how would you, how would a focal point attract or affect the local economy? And they start off with Tillamook as a cheese factory, which became an attraction by accident, not design. And I just kind of, a big question mark came up, and how do you determine that Tillamook Cheese Factory is an accident? And I can't, you can't answer that for me, but...
Yeah, I think they're just using that as an example and...
I understand. I just, it concerns me when we get these broad generalizations from a company. And that's not what I'm after when I want information. I want to know some facts and figures, and I just want to kind of temper this to say, look, maybe you want to back away from these claims if you can't substantiate. I don't know. Just, I promise I'm wrapping up. I'm done. That's it.
All right. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Norikas.
Allison, do we have any kind of a track, track record on Eco Northwest?
Yes. We checked into them, and they, you know, as part of the RFQ, they need to provide information on some similar sorts of work that they've already provided to other clients. So they, they really have a focus more on economics. They have a great group of people who can, it's just more economic-based rather than, you know, business-based. If that, they really are kind of driving down more into the economics of how a city works, so.
Have we used them before?
We have not.
In addition to the, to their, the work that they mostly do, which is this sort of work, this, this business analysis and economic development stuff, they also are becoming the go-to company in Oregon for urban renewal because, as you may know, a lot of the people that were doing the urban renewal consulting and the, the one attorney that we had that everybody was going to are all retiring. And so some of the people that have gone to work for Eco Northwest, and they have a pretty good staff now of urban renewal people. So they also have a good focus on that. So they understand our needs and what we're looking for as well.
And are, are they out of Portland or Eugene?
Portland.
Portland?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you still had one more to go. Any other questions?
I had a question.
Who's it?
Did they provide you with a list of other clients?
Yes.
They've done?
Mm-hmm.
They work for other cities?
Yes. And we've got those proposals in the office and our scoring criteria, if you're at all interested in stopping by.
So I'm just a little fuzzy. I got behind the conversation. I haven't been able to catch up, so forgive me if this has already been addressed. So kind of in a nutshell, what are we going to get for our money? What are, what are you looking for exactly?
We're going to get a report that talks about what's here existing and then what they might see as what is missing.
So we had that study done in 2006, '07? Something like that from, oh, gosh, I can't remember his name.
Roger Brooks.
Roger Brooks. Will that tie into Rogers at all? I mean, are we just, that's a dumb...
No, I think they're completely different directions. What we're, what we're looking for is what sort of, it may not be something, it may not be that this type of business is missing in Lincoln City. It may be that it's just a weak segment and that we need to make sure that we are cognizant of that so that if we have ideas and opportunities for business retention, these are the types of businesses that we would want to continue to focus on so that we don't lose. This, the segment doesn't become weaker. But then it'll also be able to, hopefully, it tells us what things that we, we may be lacking, and those are the things that we may be able to recruit from. And it isn't the city's, hasn't been very active in recruiting, but there are other partners out there, like the Small Business Development Center, maybe the Chamber of Commerce, that have expressed an interest in doing that sort of thing, but never, nobody ever really knows, well, who do we go after? And then there's always the issue of, well, if we decide, hey, we need another barber shop in town, how many, how many incentives do you put out to get another barber shop to come to town when the barber shop that's here is going to go, well, wait a minute. I've been here 20 years. You never gave me a dime. So it's kind of a balance between those two. But until we really know what kinds of things a city of our size, and it's going to be a little tricky because we're not just a city of 7,000 people sitting someplace. We're a city of 30,000 people every three or four days. And so that, they got to throw that in the mix, too. So there are businesses that can survive here that our, our, our local people wouldn't be able to support. But the fact that they're, we have visitors, they, for the most part, are looking for completely different things as well, so.
Well, are we looking towards businesses that pay a, a higher wage? You know, more of a living wages? Or is that what we're exploring? Or I...
Well, I don't think we've got to that point yet. I think we're more looking at what is lacking or what is weak.
Because to me, when you say what's lacking or what's weak, those immediately pop out, you know. Be nice to have...
For, for example, the one thing that comes forward is like a commercial laundry. We have more motel rooms than anybody else in so far and all that. We don't even have a commercial laundry. They get, stuff gets shipped out someplace. Every day, a truck comes from Portland and delivers stuff to motels and all of our restaurants. Maybe there could be a warehouse in Lincoln City that, that a business that could support itself here in Lincoln City and have employees in Lincoln City. So those are just two of the things, the sort of the things that are popping out.
I get it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one, not directly on this. But do we still have an advisory board or is that been disbanded? Or, I asked that question last time, but then I did some research on it and...
Yeah, the advisory board was disbanded maybe 10 years ago.
Because I went back through and read through the goals, and it said that there's supposed to be continual public input. And without an advisory board, how are we getting that?
The decision was made to disband the, disband the board, the advisory board and that the, the communication between the agency and staff was going to, was, seemed to be adequate without that extra layer in there. And then a lot of the work that we do is with all of those, with our, with our community vision charrettes and planning. And that certainly developed. We get, we get a lot of public input from that.
And with the amount of money we're expending here and with the VCB, we have an advisory board there, I don't understand why we don't have more citizen input with the urban renewal funds. I mean, to me, I think that's real important. I mean, even on this, we have local businesses here that could give input along with the research you're doing and what they want to have here in town, too. But I'd like to see that come back strongly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Davis, we, we welcome public input, and every urban renewal meeting we have, we don't get it. We've got the economic toolbox with loans, with grants, with interest-free loans that are not taken advantage of. We make that known to the public. There really doesn't seem to be a whole lot of interest. And I think we're reduced to hiring somebody to help us determine what it is that could stimulate the economy. It might not work. I mean, there's no guarantee.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm going back 10 years also because I was, I think I served on it for three years with Kurt. So, I mean, I was on the advisory board for a long time. We had like 20 members, I remember rightfully back then, so.
Well, it certainly became a lot of people involved in that.
Right.
Those decision-making processes. But we're, we're pretty proud of our public input. We still maintain opt-in email lists, so that, and we're constantly sending stuff out to the people that have opted in, that want updates for, in each of the different districts. So we continue to do that. What are the other, other things that we...
Well, we, we incorporate stakeholder input in almost every project we do. Or if that project has come out of the Community Vision Plan, which the majority of our projects do, then we consider a lot of that input. But we do touch base with the affected property owners that are in the area and let them know the project is coming along. And if they'd like to let us know their thoughts and impressions or, or whatnot, then we're always kind of reaching out that way.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just one quick question. As they do this gap analysis, will they also assemble demographic data that can then be taken to and used as a recruitment tool with businesses that you may be trying to help expand or locate?
That's not, that's not the focus of this. We, they offered to do that, but that, we get that information in, in a number of ways that, I mean, it gets updated each time the census comes in. So we have that type of information. So we thought that rather than spend money on getting it again, that we would just look basically at what our scope was.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at the, the background for the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Projects, 1988 to 2014. The Year 2000 Development Plan. The plan was created to eliminate blight and depreciating property values within a defined urban renewal district that covers approximately 18 percent of the city. Skip ahead to, generate job-producing private investments that will improve property values and visual quality in a manner compatible with the city's natural and built environment. Skip ahead. TIF funds to leverage private sector investment. Revital, revitalization plans should be prepared for the city's commercial neighborhood districts. It seems to me that urban renewal has already been charged with doing what we're looking to pay someone to do. That, I'm just concerned that, why do we need to do this outside? Why, why can't your department do this?
Again, it's a pretty...
What are you lacking that you can't do this?
It's a pretty specialized scope that we're looking for. And we go outside for engineering and design and construction. And there's lots of things that we go out for.
Different. It's different. That's not engineering to know we need a laundry. That, that we can't make come here. I can, I can engineer something because it's innovative, but I can't make a company come here. So I'm just curious, is, I'm not averse to finding help. But I'm just concerned that, is this just another thing we're just passing down? Because I've seen other projects lent out, or sent out to consultants and then said, well, you know, we could have just done this here. And I just don't, I'm not in favor of spending more money. It's something that seems should be your job or even the VCB's job or even the Chamber of Commerce's job. of Commerce's job. And I'm just looking for a little nudge here to say, okay, this is a good spending of money when, as if, is it nothing you could do in-house?
Well, I don't think that either of us have that sort of expertise to come up with that kind of analysis. I mean, we could, those are the sort of, that's kind of where we're at in the whole process of when we meet with the Chamber's Economic Development Group or...
So, that's not a part of urban renewal's directive is to know these things?
Well, economic development was, as Allison mentioned, it wasn't even a part of the urban renewal plan until 2009 when we, when we added it so that...
Five years ago, six years ago?
We could start looking, looking at economic development in ways that we could participate.
Six years ago. You understand my frustration? Because now we're saying, okay, six years ago, we were supposed to do this and nothing's been done? I just, help me out. Help me, help me be on your side on this.
We've added three new tools to the economic development toolbox and that has been the focus of getting money out into the business community. So, since 2009, that's what we have been focusing on.
And which nobody's wanted, so?
Yeah.
Kind of a failure or...
It's hard to anticipate what the demand will be. And we did a study before developing those tools, which was interesting. We have that in our office as well, that really asked the businesses through the Chamber of Commerce what tools they would find helpful and what tools they think other businesses would find helpful. And based on that information is what we, that's how we developed what tools we could develop. And then, the agency decided which tools to move forward into the toolbox. And so, those were the three tools that we've moved along in addition to the facade improvement loan. So, that's kind of the last several years of how much we focused on economic development.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
What's the timeline on, they're providing the report once we've let the project?
I think about 90 days is what they anticipated.
The reason I'm asking is because one of the items that they were talking about here was how would big-box retailers affect our economy? And that's one of the items that is something the city council has been dealing with, with one of the requests coming through for expansion of the Lighthouse Square, for instance. I was wondering if it was going to be soon enough so that we, maybe we could postpone that until such time as this report comes in to have that information.
Yeah. Now, that would be part of the follow-up work. We knew that the city council was going to be grappling with that issue. And so, we asked them and through the process of interviewing them, if that was the kind of, if that kind of information, how readily available it was. And I think that they were suggesting for a couple thousand dollars that they could put together a white paper of the pros and cons of big-box development so that you could look at it and make a decision based on, you know, some analysis by people that do that sort of thing. But it's not part of the scope, but we could, it could be added to it. And the same with the tractors. I mean, there's, there's talk often about, you know, well, do we need a water park or do we need go-carts or what other things would be visitor attractions? And so, we asked them if that's kind of the stuff that they could do. And again, they can do that, but it's not part of the scope.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, follow-up on that, then why don't we go out and get that, embrace that whole scope and get an RFP, you know, get a proposal and doing the whole thing at one time so we can see the whole picture as a whole instead of segmenting it all the way down.
That's entirely possible.
How much more would they charge to do the big-box thing, for instance?
So, the big-box thing, I think, was $20,000, something like that. And I think that the tractor thing was a little more involved, so it was around $7,000 price tag as well.
I, for one, would be interested in the, in their take on the big-box effect on the economy. And, well, yeah, the economy and local businesses, that sort of thing. I don't know. How's everybody else feel about that?
I'd like to expand it into the attraction thing. I think that's important to the VCB as well as...
So, there's two ways of doing this. We could come back with a proposal that includes all of those, or we, or you could approve the one that's before you tonight and we are able to, Richard, help me, there's a, is a follow-on to contracts? If somebody has a contract with us and we want to add additional work to it, then we can do that and bring that portion of it back to you for your approval. Is that, do I have that right? Follow-on work there.
Well, Mr. Chair, during the big-box discussion, I believe, I'm sorry, Debra Nicholson?
Nicholson.
Nicholson, thank you. Debra Nicholson brought forward all kinds of studies concerning the big-box stores and what economic value they have and don't have and the like. So, I don't, I would just, before I'm comfortable voting to give more money, I would ask that maybe, see if we have that information already available in-house? Because I believe it was presented to both planning and council.
Yes, go ahead.
My memory of that presentation was more general and not specifically Lincoln.
Was my concern too.
There's no mystery about how big-box works economically and what it does to little businesses, but maybe it has value to formalize that through your study. I mean, I mean, attractions, I'd be really interested to get the dynamics of attractions. I'm just saying that effects of a big box are pretty well-known. There's a lot of big boxes around and they all are kind of work predictably in a small town.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to kind of piggyback. I think we're going to be on different ends. Mr. Ward and I are going to be different ends of that, but I do think there's already the informations out there. And if, if we're going to tailor everything specifically to Lincoln City, I can see if we're talking geography, topography and things like that. But I think there's an industry out there that's already determined these things. And if we're just a little bit of due diligence, we could probably find that without dropping another $20,000. It's somebody's money that we're spending and I just want to be very, very careful with it. That's all I'm saying.
For the sake of time, we're 15 minutes to go here and we've got a lot more on the agenda. I would suggest that we hold that discussion on the other two items to a later time. We can do that as a follow-on work option.
Thank you.
So, why don't we go ahead and, is there any more discussion on the initial proposal? Okay, if not, should we do a vote now on that to take that forward?
A motion to approve would be in order.
Okay. Is there a motion to go forward with the proposal?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we direct staff to award a contract to Eco Northwest for business gap analysis in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Norikas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Williams?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item, then, is the Cutler District Highway Corridor Plan.
And I'll run through this pretty quickly so that we do have some time for discussion on the final item. As you know, project categories are, that the urban renewal can work in are found in the 1988 Year 2000 Plan, which is the, which is the Bible document for the Urban Renewal Agency. And then, we refine those projects. Some of them are very specific, you know, like a park at D River, and some are very general, like sidewalks. And so, we refine those at the local level, business districts and neighborhoods, as to what the needs are for that area. And we've done four of those community visioning, as you know. And we do that normally through what we call charrette process. And for those of you that are familiar with that, that's sort of a, an accelerated planning process that usually takes place within a week. And we bring in all the stakeholders. And for example, in Cutler City, we had over 800 hours of public input during that week from stakeholders. And in addition to that, it's really surprising how many people we get from out of town. We probably had at least 20% of the people that participated that were out of town that have second homes in those districts that really felt like they, you know, took time out and came and participated. And they were usually put in an awful lot of effort because they had nothing else going. They were down here that week in order to be a part of that. So, the, pages are all filled up. So, our latest one was Cutler City, as you know. And we did a bunch of projects for, within the neighborhood and then within, along the highway. And as we came to developing those projects, as we wound down the process and came forth with the projects we were going to do, realized that projects on the highway probably aren't quite ready yet. There really wasn't the, the businesses weren't ready to do that because it's going to disrupt what they had going and, but we were ready to do the ones in the neighborhood that were going to affect the livability of people in that area. So, we went forth with the projects in the neighborhood. And I'll quickly run through which ones those were to remind you. We did this speed table, speed, cars speeding in neighborhoods is always a big deal. So, we did several of these within the neighborhoods. Instead of having speed bumps, we call these speed tables. We did this one along with a crosswalk to the access to the bay. This is another picture of that access to the bay. This was the Cutler Pump Station. There's actually a stormwater and a sewer lift station at this location. And if any of you remember that building before, it didn't look half as nice as this. And we were able to encourage Public Works to do something a little more striking in the neighborhood. And Urban Renewal put the money in for the storm water system, a stormwater pump station as it's part of this project. This was another access into the trail system. This is the before. There's a public right-of-way between the two houses that are here. And this is the access that we put in as part of the access into that trail system. If you haven't been in the trail system, I think it's getting ready to be a really cool area when the, this time of year when the roads start blooming, it is phenomenal. If you haven't been in there, you've got to go in there. So, this is the second entrance. These are both on Inlet Avenue. And this is what the access looks like now. We did the sewer extension that Allison was mentioning. We don't have any really good pictures of sewer line, but this is the street that it went down. And we also moved the bus shelter to this location at the request of the Link Bus Shelter, Bus Service that, as you know, Urban Renewal sort of oversees. And then, we put up the monument signs. We have these at each of the beginning and the end of each of the business district. The only two we have left to do are in Nelskot and we're just waiting for the Nelskot project to take place so that we know where, so they wouldn't be in the way during construction and we know where the new right-of-way was going to be. Because as you know, it was going to be five lanes and, and so, that will come up. We also had this project at the end of 66th Street, another bay access. We did the design. That's what it would look like if we did the construction and we're sitting on this project, this design, but not, has not been built yet. So, although we did the projects that we had identified in the neighborhood, we started to feel like with the looming sunsetting of the Urban Renewal Agency, we weren't going to be able to get to the highway projects and that they were going to have to be funded in some other way. It was fine, we had the plan. There were some great projects that the community wanted done in this area, but we didn't have the funding, well, the funding might not be in place if we would have sunsetted as we anticipated. But as you know, we've extended Urban Renewal into 2024. So, now we're able to bring forth some of those projects, especially along the highway, on the highway corridor. We continually have been in touch with the businesses that are in the Cutler District. And right now, we're looking, we're talking with six property owners, business owners, that are serious about some expansion in that area. So, that's really exciting in our world anyway. And they seem really serious about it and we just feel like these, these projects that we're going to be talking about tonight would probably go a long ways to helping along, helping get, kickstart some of those projects. Also, we did a, did the substantial amendment to the plan, as you know. And we added some new, new properties into the district and some of those were in the Cutler District. And so, they're excited to now be a part of the urban renewal district and able to take apart, take advantage of our facade improvement loans and also business expansion loans. So, let's see. What have I, this, so, this is a sketch we have of the area. And if I do this, I think we'll have a circle there of the Jettie Avenue realignment. As you know, as you come past the Bay House, Jettie Avenue goes off at a very steep angle. Two things happen there. One, people go into Cutler City very fast. And two, it has to be a one-way street because the angle is so steep at the highway. It's plenty wide for two-lane traffic, but it's the steep, it's such an angle to the highway that it would be really hard to look back and get on the highway. So, there has been talk about realigning Southwest Jettie. The Bay House owns the property across the street from Southwest Jettie that is gravel, so they're in favor of it. It would make their property contiguous and then they could do some improvements that they're talking about. So, this is what it looks like. You're all aware, it comes in at that angle. This project would realign the street and put it over next to the Crab Pot property.
So, it would become a right-hand turn, 90-degree right-hand turn?
Yeah, exactly. And probably, I mean, we don't have any statistics on it, but most people that take that turn are actually going over to 62nd Street to go into Cutler City. So, it would take some of the traffic off of that street. They would just go to 62nd Street where they want to be anyway and where it's widened and there's a sidewalk and a wide space so the cars can get off the highway, make that turn without disrupting traffic. So, it makes a lot of sense. Also, there is the Cutler Schooner Water Transmission Line that's currently being designed. It needs to be upgraded. It's on the west side of the highway and occasionally the bank sloughs off and exposes the line. So, it's, the Public Works wants to move it to the other side. It may or may not need assistance from the Urban Renewal Agents. We don't know at this time. There may be enough Public Works funding available to do that project. But that would be one of the projects that we're talking about on the highway. We also have the Bay Walk Project at Schooner Point. We've been talking Bay Walk since probably early 2, well, 2000, 1999, when we did the first Bay Walk Project along 51st Street. And the idea is to connect it all the way into Cutler City. We did the next one with the sidewalk in Cutler City. And then, we have, those are the two we've done. So, this would be the third project along the Bay Walk. And this project, you may have, some of you may have seen it before. It looks something like this. It's just to do a short, short section of sidewalk and improve that parking area. So, it looks something like this. The next one would be to design that final phase of sidewalk that we've heard about over and over again through all of our, our charrettes in Cutler City and in Taft, of being able to be able to safely walk from the Schooner Creek Bridge to Cutler City. So, we would like to come forth with a plan to do that final stage, that design of that final stage of, along the bay front there. And then, the Bay Walk would be completed. So, we just wanted to present those to you, just sort of just as an update, as a review of the projects that we're thinking of coming forth next. And we will bring those back to you one at a time as we get them ready for development, for your approval or more discussion, so.
Okay. We're getting very, very short of time. Should we postpone that next item or do you want to just briefly give it to us or...
Well, with five minutes left, it probably would take longer than that to just actually even go through at staff level. So, maybe we should postpone it.
I suspect that there'd be some deliberation on that as well. So, why don't we postpone...
You've got it in your, you've got it in your packet, so you kind of have an idea of it. And we're at a milestone point in the projects with the, with new faces. It's probably a good time to discuss the project.
Okay. Let's move that to the next meeting then.
And then, Mr. Chair, if we could bring, I know we're running out of time, but I would like to discuss that Bay Walk a little bit further, so maybe we can bring that up too?
Sure.
Next time.
Are you talking about the, both projects or one extension?
I'll try to be brief. I'm curious about ODOT's contribution on the bridge. If we're going to talk about a Bay Walk, they've got to do something to that bridge.
Yeah. There has been discussions over the years. There's nothing pending though, but I, but that bridge is on their list of bridges to be replaced.
Okay.
Which is good news.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
We'll just move those to our next meeting then.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have none. We have no resolutions, so it's time for agency member comments. Start down there with Mr. Davis?
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Mr. Ward?
Nada.
Mr. Norikas?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Then we are adjourned.